Approval of minutes.
Well, I noticed that they didn't have me listed as absent, and I think that's supposed to be on there.
Well, at the top, it has you not listed as being tested, and so that's how we've always done it. I am happy to put your name on there and put absent behind if you look.
Okay, say that one more time.
If you look at the top, I've only got Jason Emily listed.
That says we were the ones here.
Yeah. But I can list your name and put absent behind if you'd like me to.
Well, yeah, that's what I was reading on, um, on how it was supposed to be, like, with the documents that I was reading. I thought, oh, that's supposed to be on there.
I can do that.
So, yeah, you can have that. That's the only thing I know because I was in here, because I was absent, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of expenditures.
Make a motion to approve payroll in forty thousand four hundred seventy seven dollars and thirty nine cents, claims into a thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars and forty four cents, an activity balance of eleven thousand sixty dollars and sixty two cents.
On second for motion.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Public presentations. Communications and reports, principal's report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, several things to talk about. Uh, the first is the end of the semester is January nineteenth. We're almost halfway through the school year, if you can believe that. Seems like yesterday I was just starting here. Uh, we went to the Lady Grizz basketball game. That was a great success, um, just a stadium packed full of students. Yeah, that were super excited, but lots of fun. Uh, and then on the fifteenth of December, we went to the Nutcracker Ballet, and that was wonderful. They put on a fantastic performance. Um, this coming Wednesday, we're going to the Grizz hockey scrimmage game, so that's coming up. Hopefully, the weather holds out to get into Missoula that day. And I know there's a few other districts going as well. Um, so lots of fun things going on. Yeah, just all kinds of great things. Uh, as we walk around later today, I'll point out some stuff and whatnot. Uh, for operations, uh, over the Christmas, uh, holiday, we had a heater that, uh, went out, so I spent quite a bit of time up here with a couple different companies trying to get heat up and running for this building. Um, finally, um, the second company got it up and going, so.
What wrong with that?
Well.
You didn't have to replace.
Yeah, originally, they thought it was a sequencer. Um, and they were trying to get that, and then they told me it was three months out. Um, but it ended up just being the wiring to the thermostat. Is what the second company said, so.
And then sold it.
For now, hopefully. This particular heater, and I'll point it out when we do the tour, um, a little worried about it. I, I think this one.
It's pretty old.
Ninety-one, so not super old.
Well, thirty-two.
Isn't it?
It, it just seems to be a little temperamental, more than the other one that's the same age. It just seems to have little problems that they have not found, even though I keep telling them this one has issues. So, yeah.
What other issues have you had with it?
Just not working and having to turn the breakers on and off to get it up and going a lot. And I've talked to electricians about it. I've talked to two separate HVAC companies, and none of them can figure out why it would do that. Yeah, I guess it's as good as mine. I had it checked out now by two separate HVAC companies, an electrician, and the only thing they could find wrong with it was the thermostat and the wiring to the thermostat. So, we might be revisiting that. Um, I also had some facility repair work done, um, some ceiling work, um, a door handle that completely broke off. Um, I'm preparing and had to measure for some broken windows that need repaired. Several small miscellaneous facility repairs that we did done. So we got that done last month. One fantastic news is I got two separate grants, um, that we have the money for both of them and deposited. Uh, the first was, one was from the Missoula Electric Cooperative, so our power company, and that was for one thousand five hundred for new tetherball units.
Tetherball?
Tetherball.
Tetherball.
Yes.
Pole, the ball on strength, the backboard.
Do they have any kind of grants for replacing, uh, heaters or something?
They have before, um, because I actually wrote a big one when I was a superintendent, um, for, through the Department of Commerce in Helena, and it was, gosh, that was like almost a hundred grand. Um, so I've been trying to watch. They, they come through the state at different times, because that would be ideal. Actually, what most people are going to now is heat pumps. Um, it's a little bit newer technology that's more, um, friendly to the, the electric bill and whatnot. Um, and I've been told now that they are, can withstand cold temperatures. They used to not be able to. Uh, but they can actually regulate things a lot better and can easily add AC to them as well. Um, and that's where a lot of the grants are. Um, so I've been looking at the state level. I could try looking at the federal level, too. The federal ones, of course, are a lot more competitive.
Those probably aren't real. They're probably what, for a new unit, what, ten grand?
Um, to replace what we have, probably only about five.
Five.
Um, because it's really just a simple forced air unit. Uh, heat pump, yeah, looking at least ten or more probably.
Uh, have you ever got grants from, uh, like Town Pump?
Yeah, Town Pump, um, gives some smaller grants. I've never seen anything come through that big. Um, I know I got one for five hundred dollars already from that this year. But worth, worth asking around if you hear about anything, because that would be a great way to, for things like that. Um, and the other grant, uh, was from the He-Man Foundation, um, which is a local foundation out of Missoula, and that one was big. So that was over thirty-five thousand dollars. So the grant I wrote included, um, health, uh, supplies for teaching of health and science. Getting like a whole, like skeleton and pictures, interactive things like that and whatnot. Uh, and then CPR, first aid training onsite for the staff, as well as the middle school students. So I've scheduled both of those. Um, and then the other part of the grant was for a new playground structure. So I have three options, and I'm gonna create a poll, um, a Google poll that I'll send out and let the, uh, parents and the students vote and see what people like. Um, but this will replace the current bars. Um, and part of the grant I budgeted was for a construction company to remove those and install the new ones and install the new tetherball units. Um, so that's included in the grant. Uh, but I do have pictures. They're all kind of similar. Uh, this one's a little bit, um, shorter to the ground and has a, um, instead of monkey bars, the glider, zip line glider. Um, and then this one has a cover on the top, but, uh, it has monkey bars, a little bit taller off the ground. And then this one has monkey bars. So they're all kind of similar. So I have these that people can look at later. Uh, but yeah, it's pretty good. Chunk of change.
Yeah, does it have to be used in a certain amount of time?
Uh, within a year. Um, so I've already got all the supplies ordered. I've already booked for February and March first, the CPR trainings. And I've already worked with the company for these options, so hopefully, um, have those in springtime or so where they install. So it's all in the works. Are still plowing. There hasn't been a lot of snow. I think they've been up about three times, but, uh, could be using their services all this week. We'll see. Um, and I think I talked a little bit last time that we had an inspection from the State Department of Labor that went pretty well. Um, there was one critical error finding, and I've since remedied that with the Department of Labor, um, and fixed that. It was just, um, a piece of paper that we needed to supply that we didn't have. Otherwise, uh, we were good to go. They have some recommendations that I've already remedied as well, but, uh, well, that's facilities. Um, for PTO, we had a meeting, um, today, earlier today. And, and some of my work with policies for the district and working with our, uh, legal counsel. One of the things was also working about finances, and one of the things that they pointed out is that we were not running finances, uh, for our PTO correctly. Um, so in the past, we were running that through the district activity account, and legal counsel has said that we cannot do that, um, and should not have been. Um, so I presented to the PTO three possible options to move forward. Um, and I'll just briefly talk about what those are, and then at the next meeting, uh, I'm gonna work with PTO to kind of decide about where I want to go. Uh, the first is to become their own nonprofit 501(c)(3), and that's what most PTA, PTO, PTSAs, and most, um, school districts are. Uh, and they set those up a long time ago. Uh, Clevealot is willing to set that up for them, but there would be a fee involved. Which is not that much. I mean, I think it's a good deal for their services, but it is more than they have in their account.
The good part of that would be is that any, any contributions would be tax deductible.
Exactly. And it would be a one-time fee to the lawyer to set it up. The other option is the opposite of that, and that's to file as a nonprofit organization with the state, but then it would not be taxed exempt. Uh, so they would have to pay taxes on any, um, fundraising and whatnot. Uh, but that would be a cheaper filing fee. Both allow them to open their own bank account, but they are going to be a little, need to be more formal with officers and a treasurer and signers for the bank. Um, the third option that I brainstormed was if they didn't want to become that formal, is to be just a parent communication group. They could still meet with me and help plan, um, activities and, you know, do a lot of the same things. They're doing the fun activities and the luncheons, the trick-or-treat, uh, Easter egg hunts, those type of things. Uh, but there wouldn't be fundraising through the PTO. The school district would have to give fundraising, uh, for events, and then they wouldn't have a bank account. Um, so February fifth at four PM will be the next meeting, and we'll kind of continue that conversation and, uh, see where we want to go. Any questions on my reports?
General purpose public input. You guys have got some rare ones sometimes.
Someday.
Nothing? I didn't bring my list.
We'll wait.
Next month.
Uh, nothing under additions and exceptions. Order of business, nothing under old, new business, hire substitute Kena Joseph.
Cannot.
Cannot.
Karen Joseph.
So I'd recommend the hiring of an additional substitute, Kena Joseph, pending, um, a positive background check.
Yeah, cheat sheet?
No. I don't. I'm gonna have to go by memory. Uh, so, let me try it.
I make a motion to hire.
I make a motion to hire Kena Joseph as a substitute teacher based on a, her background check. Being acceptable.
To make with positive results.
Positive results on, positive results on that.
Also can.
Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Facility tour.
Yeah, so part of our policy is for at least once a year, the board to do a facility tour, going through the facility and answering questions and whatnot. Um, we could table this for another time if the board likes, or I'm prepared to give a tour and talk about some of the things. Part of this is also thinking ahead, taking remodeling or repairs that we want to do during the summer. But that's something that we want to do at least once a year.
I think we're gonna get it over with.
Is it outside?
Well.
Yeah.
Everything's outside of weapon because we have to go between buildings.
Going in between, okay. I would have rather called them, but no, it was to be outside, so it's a little.
Wild rag?
Your what?
We could, we could do the outside part another time and just focus on the inside.
Okay.
That works.
It's awfully cold.
I'd be okay with that, yeah.
You gotta walk to your cars anyways.
Okay, I'm gonna run.
Okay, so we'll start in building two.
Hello, we're in.
Is this building two?
This is building two.
Okay.
It's, they're named by number in the year they were built, so one being the oldest, two being the next oldest, and three being the newest. I'll start with the heaters because that's been kind of a pressing thing. Uh, so if we're willing to, of course, the kitchen here. So this is the heater that's been giving us trouble. It is operational now, but it's the one that sometimes is shutting off on us. Um, so this is one that took all the work over a break time. Um, so you can see there nineteen ninety-one is when these were put in, so they're not original to this structure. Uh, were put in later. You can see that they had some type of vented heating.
Solar.
That the vent wasn't removed there. Um, but this is the one that if it continues to give us trouble, it might actually be cheaper just to, uh, look at replacing the unit, um, because it does get expensive having work, people come out and whatnot. I mean, for electricians and HVAC, the hour really rates pretty high now.
What company ended up fixing it?
Um, Hotchkiss. Out in Missoula.
Yeah.
Um, the other unit that we'll look at is exactly the same. It's, um, another ninety-one vintage, um, unit, but it's working much better. Um, so you can see in the kitchen here, um, one of the things that we did that happened during the, uh, Department of Labor inspection was they had oxygen tanks here for emergency, uh, and that was not allowed, and they were expired. So I've removed those from the building. We've also updated first aid kits, made sure everything was, uh, restocked there. Anything expired disposed of, um, whatnot. Um, I'll have you go into the middle school classroom now because I'll show you with the heater what we did. So at the same time, I had them install all new programmable thermostats. Um, this building, building one, had thermostats that were not programmable, that were, um, quite old, so they replaced those so we can have things on a program for lower heat at night, uh, and higher heat during the day. So that work was done as well. Um, I also had an electrician out during, uh, the break. We had several, um, outlets that weren't working, and I had all of those repaired as well, um, so that work was done. So we'll move to the, uh, bathroom that.
I haven't looked at it.
Uh, so one of the things that I'd like to consider possibly doing this summer, if we have the money and the budget, is remodeling these two bathrooms in building two. Um, they're, they need some work. Um, if you look in here, this ceiling actually, um, had a bit of crack in it, um, and I personally repaired this. So it was kind of a on-the-fly job. I need to sand it down and paint it and whatnot, but I got the crack fixed. Um, you can also see that the flooring is, um, kind of coming up in a few spots and whatnot. These wooden stalls, um, are pretty old. Some work could be done. Uh, new toilets and sinks would also. They are vintage, which is kind of cool for some things. Um, one of the work, uh, that I had done, uh, from the repair person is that drain cover came off, and they actually had to kind of bring up the floor and put that on and whatnot. Um, so these bathrooms could use a little bit of work. I mean, they're just fine functional, but a little remodeling might be useful. Um, the doors here, um, we have repaired this summer, uh, but they do stick sometimes and whatnot. I did have somebody look at them. We may want to look at replacing several of the doors, uh, throughout the building. Um, they've put things down here below, but, um, animals were actually able to get in there, um, because they had worn down so much. These are original, I believe, and it's kind of cool because they're solid wood. Um, but they do have quite a few problems with the doors. This was the door handle that one day somebody just touched it and it came off completely. Um, so that could be something that may need done as well. Um, this bathroom is very similar.
It's hard to see them changed, though. It's all vintage.
Right.
So in here, you can see the same type of heater unit, but this one is working much better, uh, but the same year.
Okay. I wonder what they had in here before. They must have had wood. I wonder if they ever had wood. I know they did in unit one, or the number one.
No, because that's not a triple wall.
Oh, okay.
But it bothered me ever since they did their roof. Take the damn pipe out.
I think this building is like nineteen fifties vintage, I think.
Uh, this building?
I believe so.
I went to school in this building the first year that it was built.
Yeah, what year?
Um, let me see here. Let me think here. I think it would have been sixty.
Sixty, okay.
Yeah, I think it was nineteen sixty.
I've not found the plans for this building. I have the plans. I found them for building three, and I've went through them.
Yeah.
And what was that, the early eighties?
Yeah. In stages.
Yeah.
But yeah, this is kind of building two and some, some highlights there.
There were some good memories.
These doors are also having some difficulties, and I've had several repairs done on them as well. Um, next month, I have scheduled to have this window replaced. As you can see, it's broken. Just saying, next month, I have this window scheduled to be replaced. Um, it's broken. These doors have similar problems where they're sticking and whatnot. No, all the way, thank. I don't know, but, yeah, there's another one, too, that was broke before I can. So in the office, one thing I'd like to do is get actually a heating unit in hand. There's actually no, um, in here. Uh, not coming through the main heater, but we could put a little wall unit in here easily.
Is this heat?
That is all the internet stuff, all the switches and all that stuff.
So they have just a electric heater or something there or nothing?
There's nothing here.
We thought about getting one of those, um, little Amish heaters, not very expensive, and it, uh, recycles the heat and the air.
Hmm.
Very minimal. It costs about as much as a Merser. I swear, that's why I use my house when I'm not having.
And can they be installed?
Yeah, it's on wheels and put wherever you want. I'll tell them wood box.
Huh, not heard of that.
Yeah, they're pretty handy and really work well.
That's, that's cool to know.
And for this big of an area, it'd be more than enough, so maybe it's cheaper.
Pretty, pretty, pretty tiny space, uh, and of course the classrooms. One thing I found looking at the, the plans was that the multi-purpose room was actually built first, and this was added on later. So I found that quite interesting, and I've actually been up in the ceiling, and you can see that easily, how they are separate buildings technically. Um, so this is the custodian's closet, also the heater closet in here. So I have this heater worked on as well, and I actually had to put a new part into this, uh, in fall.
So do you have a maintenance contract with any heating companies that come in and go through all the units?
No, but I had that done initially in fall, which is, I'm surprised that one wasn't working right, because I had a company come out and do a maintenance, trying to be proactive. And that's when they found a actuator or something was out on this one, uh, so that was done before school started. Yeah, that's also prophaxis that in there as well.
Well, sometimes if you've got a maintenance agreement, at least how it looks with, you know, our properties, is that they would come out at any time, and supposedly it's supposed to be less money.
Yeah.
When you have them do something because you've got the twelve hundred dollars a year that you paid for that. So, you know, does it cover, does it pay for itself? I don't know. How much did, do you remember what it cost to go, go through it?
Yeah, eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred. It might be worth it to.
And this last repair from HVAC was two fifty.
So you had two fifty.
Um, every six months and time material, so they come out every six months, getting filters, just cleaning the barriers.
Yeah, for, yeah, I think we pay them like six hundred dollars twice a year per our unit.
Yeah, it could be something like that.
And then they do, like I said, they'll come anytime without charging you nights or weekends, and then you get a discount on their parts, too, so.
Which company is that?
That was Temfrig.
So I saw you, and I'm, I'm ordering that twelve hundred. I've got more years in this place.
Yeah, yeah, we seem to get our twelve hundred in too. It's worth a thought.
Yeah.
Especially when you got a few, you know.
Because like right now, a lot of, like the filters and stuff, mostly that's been done by me, sometimes the custodians. We also have all the air filtration units, too, and I've been changing those, um, filters, too. Let's see, we have bulletin board up, some kind of, uh, kindergarten artwork.
So this is an air purifier?
Yeah, it also does UV as well and whatnot, so those were new ones that were, um, given to us during COVID. The state gave those away. We have had to replace the, the filters a few times, so I guess they're working. So here are our new tables. So these came just, um, gosh, last week. So you can see I matched the colors, um, to the other blue ones. They're a little bit bigger than the other blue ones. So you can see I matched the colors to the other blue ones. They're a little bit bigger than the other blue ones. Ju- just a little bit, but they work really well. Much better to go up and down. It's easier than the old ones.
Did anybody pinch their fingers out yet?
Don't. This one is one of the old ones. The other one I already disposed of because it was completely broken, but I'll probably look at disposing of this one as well. So it does not go up and down. Pacific steel's taken this stuff. Puts us with getting rid of that one that still has less than $50.
Which is funny.
So the kitchen that was put in last year. This dishwasher did not work when I came, so it was actually still on warranty. So we got this fixed and not been running.
What was wrong with it? Never, they didn't use it at all.
Yeah, it had not been installed correctly.
It wasn't plugged in?
Well, more than that, more than that.
Okay, at least we have one that's working now, so it's good.
So one of the things we've been working on this summer and throughout this is trying, trying to get things cleaned and organized. There's been a lot of that. We've disposed of a lot of just extra stuff that needed discarded, just a lot of stuff that didn't have a purpose. I'm sure some of you can remember there used to be a lot more stuff stacked up and everything. And I won't show you the sheds tonight, but similar things where, I mean, stuff was stacked to the ceiling with lots of extra stuff and everything. So we really have worked on organizing and whatnot. Would I, just to give you an example, I'll turn the slide on. A lot of the closets were just packed full of stuff where you couldn't really even get in. There was a lot of extra stuff.
You can actually find what you need there?
Yeah, organizing things, disposing of stuff, making things more tidy and.
I got a house that I can't make it through.
The other part of that too is with having had the pest problem is making sure that we can access everywhere. You'll see the metal boxes throughout the school. That's the pest control boxes and they are coming out every month. And really, a great news is the past two months, they have found no pests inside at all, only on the outside. So I really feel that we've taken care of the pest problem and hopefully if we keep up on that, we won't have pests again inside the building. Yeah. That's building. Building two. My office is still kind of organizing.
In the process.
You have two pianos?
We have two pianos.
They both work? This one there's two?
Um, it does work. I didn't have this one tuned just because there was no use for it.
No need, yeah.
Again, we've done a lot of cleaning in this building, organizing. You can see things are organized. This is the office for the speech therapist, psychologist, the counselor and the SRO. So they all utilize this office. And we do have a new SRO, I think I talked about, Deputy Chris. He was up here this morning. I asked him to really focus on following the bus to make sure no one's illegally passing the bus. So he's trying to be up here first. He, we share him with Lolo in Target range.
Oh, okay.
How often does he come by then?
About twice a week.
There you go.
Down there is the basement. So within the basement, and we could go down there if you want, but we don't have to. This is where all the water comes in. So coming off the well, all the water is coming through here. And there's big tanks and whatnot. So that's one of the things that's down there. It doesn't run the full length of the school. And one of the things I made sure was that the, all the filters down there were changed.
So is that because the foundation is cracked or something? What, what's the water from?
No, from the, all the water's coming in. There's no water leakage.
Oh, okay.
So for the whole school off the well, all the holding tanks are down in this basement.
That makes sense.
It's a little spooky, but yeah, it's not leaking.
That's true. Always a bonus.
Was that the first time you've ever been down there?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Why?
Well, I just thought.
Were you down there?
I just thought maybe that's where they, naughty kids got them.
No, but I ought to ask my brothers. They might have been down there.
Yeah, and I mean, it's kind of cool because in like in the plans, you could see that this was the teacher age at one point that they added on to the original building and then they added on that part as well at some point.
Teacherage meaning she lived here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I knew she had lived here.
Here we've got the two bathrooms in this space.
How are the bathrooms here? Is there anything that's needed? Bathroom's in here?
They, they could be remodeled. No major problems. The, the thing is they're not used much right now. Because really it's the library. It's not, there's no classrooms in here. We have students for the library and then when I'm teaching in my room and then sometimes I put speeches here and whatnot. But these bathrooms aren't utilized too much. One of the problems that happened was this ceiling broke, some of the metal ties. And this last month, that's one of the repair things I had out for folks. They had to redo the ceiling. It was drooping down in spots, so. And not because of leaky or anything like that, just the metal things actually came out from the ceiling. So that's one repair that's been made already. You can see that they changed the heat here to these little cadet units here. There's two of them and they disconnected before I came out of base floors. This window is one that's broken. Hopefully it's double painted, but next month I have that spotted to be fixed. Yeah, kind of cool in here. If you haven't seen like the original entrance in here. That's not used at all. It's kind of cool. You can see where the kids would hang their jackets and everything when they come into the one-room schoolhouse part. It's kind of cool. I want to see that, but we don't use that in transportation.
Wow. I'm starting to feel really old.
One of the great things that's been kept up on is all the roofs. All the roofs are really new, so. Jessica and I talked and we really don't feel like we need to do any roofing this coming summer. So maybe that could open the doors to some other possible projects because those have been kept up really nice, in good condition. Any questions? It's kind of the, the really quick version of the tour of the insides and whatnot. We continue to have, you know, work done, making, making sure that things do get repaired in a timely manner so that we're not letting anything go by and then having a whole bunch of work that needs time. We'll go back. Welcome back.
Thank you.
My pleasure.